Good evening. The regular meeting of the Richmond Board of Education will come to order. Please stand for the Plenarum allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on my mission, under God, in the visible, with the routine justice for all.
Sandy, if you could please read our mission and vision statement?
Our mission statement is, at Richmond Community Schools, we provide quality education that empowers students to be successful in the global community. And our vision statement is to foster a culture of academic excellence, creativity, and character, ensuring that all students are prepared for success in an ever-changing world. And I will be real call. Board member Cunningham.
Here.
Board member Rashan.
Here.
Board member Sutton.
Here.
Board member Sire.
Here.
Board member Talto.
Here.
Board member Gillis.
Here.
I am Board member Fortuna. I am here. And we have a forum. We also will be having our student board representatives, Kelsey McFinnara, and the shapeur who's going to be a little bit late, but no doubt.
Thank you very much. I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda. So moved.
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda. So moved. Do I have a second?
Support.
I'm sorry.
Support.
Thank you. Mr. Walensky.
Hey, in the personnel report, you'll see there's two layoffs. This is in regards to, these individuals were hired by the district as district employees as part of Title I, but they service same A's. Same A's is changing their model for Title I services, so we are laying the two individuals off that are original employees that service same A's in their new Title I plan. So you have a new lunchroom hire, Jessica Isman. Couple resignations for the class advisor, but we can see in the appointments, we've also had people who applied for them, so. Other than a speech and language that we continue to look for, all the positions are filled. There were no questions regarding the board meeting minutes from the 25th of August, as well as the claims and accounts. And in your report, you can see the district head count report, FTE report. You can see by that, we are out. Out right now, so. A lot of kids have registered, just registered, and we have more coming this week. That's it.
Right. Does that mean that, for speech, we're going to have to continue to use that virtual service that we have hired up from the board, or how is that going to work?
We actually met today. We're going to contract for that service, but it's an onsite building. It's a virtual.
So they would have very small case of our students, they'll service them in non-public schools. And then our high school students, they travel the market, and that, and the high function of middle school, so I think the, it's 13 of our students, our campus that will have a virtual service.
But we are still looking to hire. Speech and language.
So we still have to do that contracted service.
Yes. So that contract will come to the board for this year's, we know, of the next meeting, similar to what we do at each other contract these zones, but our goal is to get a person. It's harder and harder to find speech and language people.
If we do get a person, can we cancel our contract?
There's some parameters in there we have to, because I noticed, there's a notice we have to, so there will be potential some overlap, but if we're getting someone from somewhere else, gives that days to, for that to get their notice and status.
Anyone else have any other questions?
Yeah. On the, on the report, it said we're in need of a bus driver. So is it just one bus driver?
We are, we're looking for as many as we can get. We have two, if you recall, the bus drivers we had tied up with the security guard, the security division. We have technically two vacancies in those positions, so we're trying to find bus drivers who are looking for more of a full-time position.
Okay.
To account for though, but we're looking for as many bus drivers as we can.
So that's about that?
Yes.
What, that means, okay.
Some of our, our bus drivers, you just want to be subs. They're covering for routes right now, we want to get them back to be a sub.
Okay.
They're helping us out right now.
Okay. Thank you.
In the forum, do you have some questions regarding permanent sub, the building subs? And reminders, can we, did not call them back this year?
I did not call them back for the month of, or September. Looking at their usage rate from last year and not knowing what the budget is, or where I can pay for them. The letter said October 1st, we'd make a decision for the building subs.
And did we kind of talk about that at the beginning? Were you talking larger?
We didn't. We talked about it, but it wasn't necessarily a board decision that we're not going to do that. I'm just trying to figure out where I can save as much money, because when you see the presentation, the Tammy and I will later, not knowing where we are lancing. Again, I'm looking at the attendance rate, generally, at the beginning of September, we don't have a lot of absences. Generally, I'd say we don't.
Remind me of the questions, because we do know that there is one educator who is pregnant, and we'll be out on the training. What will we do in that case, rather than just having somebody come in and fill daily, randomly?
So our first priority, when any time we have a staff member that's out, is to see if we can find a sub who's got that certification. So if it's a math person, our preference is to have a sub, maybe it's a retired teacher that's subbing, or has someone who's trying to get a teaching job who's got a math problem. If we can't, then obviously we can put them in, add placement, and then put a plan together so that they have support for that math instruction. Which might be one of the instructional coaches working with the sub. It might be in the past, we paired up subs with other teachers who teach that subject, to them do the lesson planning, rather than the sub doing it, so. I can't say there's one way to do it, because we've done it different ways in unique situations.
Is there an option for having a permanent person in that position, though, when that time comes?
Like to hire a person?
Or have a permanent person coming every day?
The same person every day?
That's, that's our plan, is to have the same person, identify that person prior to the person going out, so it's the same person in there. Our preference is that same person has a background in the subject they're going to be teaching in. Like that, I believe it's math, that we're going to be looking for, so find someone with a math background. If not, then we have a sub, the same person, but then we provide support for that person.
As a person.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not our intention to have a different person every day, no. We know this person's going to be out, so we find one person to take the position.
But on the other part of our question, though, as board, when we talked about the budget and those permanent subs, we never said we weren't going to, that we weren't going to continue that, but you're looking at waiting because of how everything's going with your budget, to decide how we're going to move forward.
Correct. And part of what I looked at was attendance, so the first couple weeks of school, we don't, at some point, I think we're going to be, my intent is to put them back, unless we get something told from the state that we're getting less money or so forth, then we've got to reevaluate. But just trying to save that expense along with you guys.
But we have to go back to December or something?
For the, for the one that you represented? Yeah. But for the building subs, that would be before December, that we're having to.
Anyone else have any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is our first presentation, District School Improvement.
Billy, is it on the Mac computer, or is it on your computer? Who made you do that? So, screens?
Okay, so, we submitted our district improvement plan for, for this year's, you know, plan. We built it all last year, and then submitted it June 30th for this coming school year. We designed a three-year plan this year, which is kind of about the trend and kind of recommendation coming out of ISD and MDE to, you have annual goals, but look at a three-year kind of overall plan, so that you have a little bit, give yourself a little bit of time to make those progressive steps. So kind of this is an overarching theme for our plan this year, is to brighten teachers with collaborative time to identify student needs, which will then be addressed by systematic intervention supports for academic and environmental needs. So, we do have growth targets, which are based off of our current proficiency. Space is a little rocky on this one. So the current state benchmarks are with a target of 56% proficient in ELA and 43 in math, and that would be on average for that group of students. You know, no matter the grade level or building level, it's, that's what we're looking at for each group of students. So our teams, just to kind of talk about what they do, is there's a district team that gets together once a month, that involves both principal and dean from each building, and then they identify two or three or four key folks that come to the district meeting, and then they meet usually sometime during the following week with a larger building team. As we're looking at the data, they're looking at a number of things, and that's, you know, who has put all of this thing together as we continue to look at it. So they, the teams pulled out their data from last year. This process started in about October of last year, so right around the same time I would have presented the data to the group here, they were then taking that and analyzing it. And so their growth targets, while in some cases, you might notice like, oh, we're talking about a 39% with a three-year goal for middle school math, the state is looking at a projection of 43, but they really took into account their trajectory. And so they're looking at a 2.5% growth each year annually to get to that, with, you know, maybe another year out, but they would hit that 43. So they were being very realistic and very intentional, and not just saying, oh, well, we're going to hit 43 in three years, just, you know, because that's what we say we're going to do. They really truly looked at the trajectory and where we've seen our students grow, so that it was an attainable growth goal, but still getting to that year 56 or 43 within a, you know, within a three to four-year timeframe. And then, again, in other cases, we were already above the state benchmark, and so we just kind of kept it going, again, at a realistic pace. And these targets are measured by those state assessments, so this would be the M-Step, SAT, and DSAT, so specifically those tests. So what the process, so the MYKIP process is what the state kind of walks us through now in our building of the school improvement plan. And so they kind of have you do this project, our task called the five Y's. And so you kind of look at your data as a whole, which is a little bit challenging sometimes, because the process used to be very just school, each school built their own plan, and so the data they were looking at was very specific to the building, and they could kind of dig in deep to just what was happening at that building level. Now we have to do it at district level, which can be challenging, because there are different challenges and different types of data coming out of the different buildings. So we have to really look at it with a big, broad lens for this particular document, but then, you know, rest assured, the teams who take that and then apply it to their buildings so that it's still effective for them. So this year, as we kind of went through that process of them asking, you know, the questions, and us coming up with, okay, what do we see? Where are our challenges? Something that really stood out to the team was a decrease in proficiency after grade three. And that's to say that we weren't still really proficient compared across the state, but for our, compared to ourselves, that was where we saw a dip. And so then we kind of, again, going digger, digging deeper into that why. We talked about students transitioning to middle school after grade three, and that may be a time where there's a difference in teacher development, or collaboration, or intervention processes that are available to students. We talked about fourth and fifth grade teams do have common planning time to collaborate, but the clear intervention process is still kind of an early intervention stage, the early implementation stage, compared to what's been happening at the elementary school. And then the sixth through eighth grade troubles, teachers are having trouble finding that time within the scheduled day to meet. So the nice thing is, like I said, this plan was built out last year, as we talked about here, and already this year, coming into it, we've realigned that schedule to allow for more time, so we're kind of checking off the boxes, I would say, of this plan that we've kind of, where we've identified those challenges. And then at the high school level, the teachers do have pretty adequate collaborative time, but because of the rigorous concerns of a high school schedule and the classes that they have to take, it can be harder sometimes for students to fit intervention into their day. And so we noticed that as a challenge. So, again, not to kind of dwell on the negative, but that's really what the process kind of pushes you to do, is be really honest with yourself about where are some of those challenges in the district. So in kind of going through that, the next step that walks us through as a team is to define a challenge statement. And so we kind of put together this overall statement, and it's similar to that front goal that we saw. If the district allocates adequate time and resources for teachers to collaborate to determine the greatest challenges for students, then appropriate systematic intervention can be established, so that student achievement will remain consistent throughout their career. So again, going back to that why, like, where do we see those dips? And we would like that to be more consistent all the way across. So the past few years, there were goals kind of specific to reading, specific to math, sometimes specific to science or social studies. Again, kind of looking at the trend and looking at the information coming out from MDE and through ISD, our ISD, where they do participate in their trainings, each, or throughout the school, it's not exactly every month, but throughout the year on building these plans, they really started to push towards that overarching goal, with just a couple of big key strategies, and then tons of activities below it. So it really kind of helps each building hone in on what they need, because you can apply an activity to one school, even apply an activity to one grade level if you wanted to, whereas that overarching goal has to be something that everyone, K-12, has to follow with it. So it's a little bit easier to have like a big goal that could really fit, you know. I and I too always struggled with, you know, if we have a reading goal or a math goal, if I'm a teacher that doesn't teach those things, why do I need to buy into this? And so that, I always felt was a challenge. And I like that now we're having more of the opportunity to have these kind of big, broad goals, and then the teachers can find the place where they fit into that to help support it. So under the goal, we have two key strategies. The first is a multi-tiered system of support. So this is an effective strategy, because it really can apply to academics, it could about behavior, it could apply to environmental pieces that a student's experiencing, so there's a lot that could go into that. And so it's really identifying, again, those interventions. So the student is struggling in this way, how do we approach it? How much help does that student need? How much support can we offer to get them back on track with their peers? So these boxes are actually just kind of off of the definition of, that the state considers to be of the multi-tiered system of support. So again, those boxes are just identifying what we would kind of be committing to if we select this as a strategy. The state says that it would need to be team-based, and it would have to have a tiered delivery system, and congruence and assessments to, you know, confirm that it is working well, will be database. So, again, that definition comes from the state to us, and we just are committing that we would abide by that. And then this is the part where I said we kind of really dug in, and were able to make our own decisions, and we really look at, it's kind of twofold. So anything that we are spending, any of our grant money on, title money on, now has to be in the plan. That was not always the case, this was the first year that they required that. So we had to be very diligent and careful that anything that we were paying for, we had to identify somewhere as an activity. And so this might seem a little bit more detailed than it has in years past because of that. But again, the nice thing is, now we have all of that in one place, and we can really think about it in one big picture. And so what we spent a lot of time doing as a team was, okay, well, we listed three things that were kind of similar. Do we need all three of those? Or how do we decide which ones are best, where we're getting the most bang for our buck? Should we go on with that one? And should we scale that here to go bigger here? So while it was kind of a new challenge for us, I think it was a really great task and really enlightening for us, and I feel really confident about the activities, if you will, the initiatives that we were able to move forward with in a strong way. So we know that Hagan is a district-wide initiative, Hatching Results is a big initiative for our council department in the secondary levels. You guys have heard a couple of different presentations on Positive You and Silent Mentoring. So again, all of those are part of our grant programs, and so we do want to have a good focus on those. Kind of under the umbrella of intervention, the elementarys is True Blue Tickets, and we have the county, again, as part of the grant from the ISD. A number of intervention programs for students, again, from academic to behavioral. Our teams are participating in a number of different attendance initiatives, and we're looking at introducing some new attending software. Then again, a couple of different PBIS programs depending on the building, and so those will be start tailored once it gets to the building levels. Our teams are constantly needing to go over student supports and reviewing those individual plans for students. At the high school, for safety and accountability, we use the Ecall test system, and Gaggle is our online safety tool that we use. So again, those are things that kind of build our whole system, but also are, again, part of our grant, so we do have to mention them. And then the second piece is about guaranteed and viable curriculum. And so I mean, again, we know that we've spent a ton of time over the last few years really learning our ELA and math curriculums, especially with fidelity, and making sure that if all teachers across, you know, K-12 are implementing those realistically and with fidelity across the board. And so that's really what this strategy is about. Again, the definition that's on the screen is the one provided by the state. So if we say that we're selecting the strategy, these are the things that we are committing to, so equity across all students with the curriculum vertical and horizontal alignment. It's really honing in on those standards, it's not just about what's nice to know or what teachers like to teach, it's what the standards are really calling for. Allowing student flexibility, representing non-disciplinary goals across for teachers. So again, making sure it's being taught the same in every class, not the same, but with the same rigor in every classroom. And the key activities that fall under this strategy are our new ELA math curriculums, our science curriculum, our intervention curriculums, which include Excel, Reflex, Math Ismos, Accelerated Reader, literacy libraries available in the K through five, number talks K through five, study as weekly as our social studies resource, assessment and monitoring, so we do, to use NWBA, DRA, pay for through it, and our EdWalk through, which is what teachers, the administrators use to do their observations, and track that data efficiently. Of course, you've heard from our instructional coaches as a support, we have co-taught classes in Hagan, our PLC and kind of planning time, and of course, our other professional development days, and those functions can be monitored through this program. And then summer school, credit recovery, those kind of student support pieces as well. So that's kind of, and then as a highlight, we do have to make sure that you're aware of how we communicate this information out, so places like this, at the board meeting, we try to send information out on social media as often as we can, so that parents have a quick look at what's going on, and on the website, and then our newsletters as well. So that's how we try to share what's going on, these key pieces from our plan.
What questions do you have about MYKIP this year?
I have a question. So regarding the assessment and monitoring, in terms of their demands, it sounds like there's some higher demands from us to them. Put some further stipulations that, or others.
I'm not sure if I can follow your question. From, like, from administrative leadership to the teachers, is that kind of for?
Or maybe in order to receive all the funds, is there more?
Oh, from the state, or us?
It's need to provide, yes.
Yes, there, yes, there you go. So, yes, that is true. So for everything that is in here, it has always been kind of required that you would monitor and evaluate and so on throughout. So this past year, we were really kind of building the plan and kind of revamping it a little bit. We kind of took a different strategy than had been using, as I said, that one overarching goal, and then making sure that we had all of our activities in there. And yes, now we will have to go in, and for any of those things that we're spending grand total dollars for, we do have to provide an evaluation for those. But we do have a good plan for that, we have a system that we're building out, like, so we've kind of built it as we planned it this year, so that this school year will really be able to track all of these things and make sure, again, if we realize one of these interventions is not showing us any success, we absolutely will evaluate that, and say, wait, if that wasn't the one, what else do we got? You know, where do we go for it?
So Billy, is it correct to follow up that the state's looking for is what you're spending the dollars on, effective? And so to get that data, or to see whether it's effective, internally, we're monitoring and seeing is, are we seeing the results that we want?
Yeah.
That's an internal.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's where, if, we're not, correct, we're not sending anything to anyone.
No.
But we are, we're either creating internal Excel sheets or something, so, okay, let's check our attendance end January 1st, December, do we see an improvement? Can we say that improvement was based on the strategies or the activities that we're implementing?
Or like on the screen, seeing like monitor and EdWater. So that's like the tool, the kind of checklist almost, if you will, that the principals have on their tablet when they're going to the classroom, or the teacher, you know, we expect, if I'm going into a reading lesson in the elementary, I expect to see these five key things happening, that we've as a team decided our essential five pieces. Well, I walked into these five rooms, I saw, I walked into this classroom, I keep not seeing it every time I walk in, and now that teacher's scores are going down. Well, that proves it is working, we got to help this teacher implement it. Or, I see I'm implementing it in the app, or, quickly, hearts, what was going on?
So you touched base, it's internal monitoring.
Yes.
Sharing data to?
No. And so it's all narrative, yeah, so I do have to go into the platform and, and confirm that we are doing that, but it would just be that, you know, we use our EdWalk through data, and we're seeing it 90% of the time, you know, so it's very vague, very narrative, it's not sending out data.
Like personal children, personal stuff.
Not at all.
Disturbances.
No, nothing like that.
No.
Stuff on that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Can I just have another? I, one of my four first schools, I would have a school improvement team, and it's very, I feel like, they're very trusting in that, like, what you put in there is what you say you're doing. Like, if I put that I, you know, I have black hair and blue eyes, they're trusting that you legitimately do, they don't really, unless there's some, like, off-the-wall thing that's, you know, a red flag, they're not going to come in and, they don't come and investigate.
The type of, they would come and investigate would be if our scores were low. So if we were like a bottom 5% performance level, they would be here, meaning what?
We could say, yes, I did try IXL, and I saw a 10% increase or 12% increase, and it could just be a matter of two sentences, instead of anything.
Exactly.
Yeah, super crazy.
Are there other frameworks other than MYKIP that some?
No, we haven't used MYKIP as the state mandated.
The state law, and I don't, part of the School Aid Act, requires schools to have school improvement processes in plan. And as a state of Michigan, and you've probably heard Billy's predecessor Renee talk about the phase-in of this over time, but we're now getting more of the details of tying your grant dollars to make sure it's now in the plan, where we didn't have to do that, but internally, we were trying to figure, do that ourselves. And to go back to your question, or your statement, Danielle, one of the things I think we're fortunate, good and bad, our staff are very hard on themselves. They don't always take credit for the achievements they have, and I'll just use the example at a high school, welcome back PD, they were talking about their results and their scores, and they set a target, and they may not have met that target, but they also have achieved in what they've done over the last year, the strategies, is something to be remarkable and celebrate. Again, we're all working towards that end product of proficiency. But our staff, that honesty, you know, they're probably harder on themselves when they look at the data and that what they really need to do.
I would agree with that, definitely. And it's, I mean, as much as it's a little more difficult down this end, it's helpful for me and Tammy, because we've always had to on the back end tie what we were spending those dollars on, and put that into the, the next side of things, and so now it's kind of just bridging that gap, so it's not us on the back end trying to remember, yes, and, oh yeah, who was using that, and where did, how did that go? It's all there in front of us, and the teachers are thinking about it, and they actually were really interested when we did this activity of, okay, which, which grant is kind, we kind of did a game, I'd be like, which grant is paying for which activity or which initiative? And they were really interested in honesty, and I think it helped them have a better understanding of how our funding does work, and why, you know, when everyone, you know, has their different idea of which tool they want to use, we can't buy all of them, right? We have to as a team decide which is the best one. So, as much as it's a new kind of challenge, it was eye-opening, and I think, I think I could think, it was a positive. Anyone else? And you do have a full, complete copy of the full report, and you have backup too.
Oh, you have it up there. Awesome. Oh, okay.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Next item on our agenda.
Your item on our agenda is our budget and cash flow presentation.
So before Tammy begins, I was really hoping, I think Tammy was to, you're gonna come here tonight and say that we got it, we have a budget. We don't. So what I asked Tammy to put together and help the board and viewing audience understand is if we assume a state shutdown because they haven't come up with a budget, what revenue are we going to receive despite state shutdown? And what does our expenses look like? And at what point do you run on money? If you think of it from your own home perspective, you got money in the savings account and if you're not getting a paycheck, at some point your savings account is gonna run out. And so that's what I asked Tammy to talk to and share where our projection's gonna be at.
Thank you. The document that I have in front of you on the screen is our forecasted cash flow during the summer. As Brian mentioned, you know, what are we going to receive if we don't get any state aid or state grant funding? Thank goodness we have a summer tax collection. You can see that the top line of the revenues is very heavy. That starts July, August, September, October, then wanes after November and December. But that is what allows us in general to not have to borrow from cash flow is having a summer tax collection. So that brings in a lot of money upfront and we never get a September state aid payment and our October state aid payment doesn't come until the 20th or could be later depending on where it falls differently. So that's very important to us to have these summer taxes because what's really curious here. We have a few other grants that we received from last year in July and August, and then we have some state, I'm sorry, Mucomai Stead Millage revenue as well. Again, heavy in the months of July, August, September, October, and then it says to wane off as those, that property tax payment will go closes. So in general, our estimated receipts outside of state aid, we did get an August state aid payment, so that's the only one on that line, but we bring in about 5.8 million in estimated receipts. When you add that to our beginning cash balance to show at the top, 4 million, just over $4 million, we have available funds of 9.9 million. If you schedule it out with our two payrolls each month and our bills that we pay each month, so we've got big bills in there, like for our insurance, we have lost fuel, we have electric, water, gas, all of that has to be paid. So when you look at that, it takes us to about 9.7 million from August to December. So the revenue section is pretty much based on actual revenues from last year's, like August, which are this year's actual revenues. Our expenditures, I don't like to operate too close to the cuff, especially when talking cash flow. So I did increase expenditures by 10% just to allow for price increases across the board, wages, benefits, other supplies, materials, that type of thing. So when we get to the end of December, what we have left, carry ons, 175,000, which romantic is very, now even January may well. So hoping that if they shut down, it's not a long one, which we can't imagine it will be, but it is possible to suppose, but we're good. We're good until end of November, but comfortable, December, I think we can flip that out, but after that, we do need to have that.
So depending on what happens in Lansing, again, we're projecting our worst case scenario. By the fiscally, by being fiscally responsible for the last several years in our budgets, we have enough in our fund balance to weather us through December. Let's just, let's make an assumption at some point, we still don't have a budget at the end of October, which would be 30 days, 31 days after they're supposed to approve it. Then we're gonna have a conversation about going and preparing the documents so that we can borrow money so that, because that's gonna take time. It's gonna take time to get the board to approve the document, get them submitted in bank through short term loans so that we're ready to go. Worst case on that, we don't have to borrow money. Everything comes back and the state aid payments start rolling, possibly the back payments. Again, but I wanted to give you a picture. We are in very good shape. This isn't something that's standard in most districts. Most districts are often borrowing because they don't have a September payment and they don't have enough to meet the cash flow. Especially if you have, you're in an area where oftentimes you have the liquid taxes, you're not getting that tax revenue right off the bat. And we've had previous conversations about you could split your taxes, get some in August of summer, some in winter taxes. The downside of that is exactly what we're looking right here. You have less revenue when things are out of your control. Any questions you might have for Tammy about this or?
I don't have any questions, but I just, I really appreciate the productivity in getting this so that we are prepared for, like, you know, prepare for the worst, right? So thank you for doing that and showing us. I appreciate that.
I have one question. That fund balance, that does include like our set aside too, right? That's not like, set aside is not a whole nother entity that we, like the term stuff that's?
Oh, no, that is not.
This is just all our general fund dollars.
That is not included, that she said.
Oh, not, this is not included in?
No.
So when you, when you grew the budget with a set aside, we're moving that money to non, non bond capital projects, is that right?
Yes.
The non bond capital projects fund. So you'd have to say, we're gonna move it from that fund.
Back over to the general.
This is general funds.
Gotcha. Okay.
So there's a little money.
So there could be more, but I don't think we're gonna have to.
Touch, yeah.
Yeah, so maybe we could draw from that to supplement.
And that would be the only place because that is one of you set aside, you can move it back. We can't touch that money, we can't touch school bunch money, but we can still touch on the non bond capital projects. That is an option.
Any other questions for Tammy? Okay, next item on our agenda is our presentation for free breakfast and lunch date.
So what I asked Tammy to kind of put together in conversation with Kathy, our food service director, was to look at, again, kind of worst case scenario, if there isn't a budget, what do we bring in for revenue as a, for breakfast for all, breakfast and lunch for
So for 2026, we are assuming we're going to be part of the Michigan School Meals Program. And that is good until September 30th of 2025. The reason is the state approved their budget through September 30th, so we are probably in for that day. So what is the Michigan School Meals Program and how does it work with the community eligibility provision maybe for? So school breakfast and lunch has been available for free under these two programs since 2324. It's combination, so the CEP covers whatever the US government normally pays us. So it's a free lunch, they send us the money to cover the cost of the free lunch. If it's a reduced lunch, they send us the money that they pledge to cover the difference between what the student might have to pay, which is a reduced cost and the full price. So we get that also from the Department of Agriculture through the state. And then we get nothing on the community eligibility for students who don't qualify for free or reduced. That's where the Michigan School Meals Program comes in. It gives us money for those full paid students. It reimburses us for that since we're not charging the students and it pays the balance of those reduced meal prices. So the, in those two programs together, one's by enrollment community eligibility provision program and the Michigan School Meals Program that the state covers and that's why our lunches are free for our students. Again, that Michigan School Meals is funded through Tuesday, September 30th. After that, we can choose to stop the CEP program mid-year and return to the regular USDA National School Lunch, National School Lunch and Breakfast programs. If we're doing that, we have to contact the state to get their assistance to get that happen. We have to let families know that as of this day, we're changing our program. As of this day, we will start charging for meals, but we have to get it through the approval process to do that. In the meantime, someone will have to cover those free, the balance of those reduced meals and the full price meals during that transition. That's my understanding. If the state says, no, we'll carry it over till you get the transition complete, we don't want to get that. And then we have to collect, right now, we collect direct certification reports from parents, families for the CEP program. If that goes away and we go back to the National School Lunch Program and the National School Breakfast Program, then we have to do the regular nutrition event applications that they've done prior to 23. Does that make sense? So we're good for now. Under the School Meals Program for 2324, we received about 475,000 in total. In 2425, it's down to 395,000. Again, it depends on our free and reduced lunch counts. The more free and reduced we have, the less money we get from the state through the state after the program. But it's a chunk of money and it really depends on how it gets us to eat, how it qualifies for free or reduced lunch. Those are the two years that we operated under this program, something seemed to come in, coming into this program.
So in kind of a summary, if the state were to say, we're not funding this and we elected to fund it, we're looking at about $400,000 of whatever revenue we would have getting from the state to finish this year. And again, I'm ballparking it because it depends on not enroll. And we're, you're looking at this from two lenses. You're looking at what's happened at the national level, the free or reduced lunch in the national budget, but you're also looking at what the state is, as Tammy said, giving us the difference between the cost of the meal and whether it's a free lunch, a reduced student fee or a full price. So, and as Tammy said, that transition, if we had to elect to change it, we have no idea at this moment that, let's say it's a 30 day transition, who is responsible for the cost can maintain free breakfast and lunch for all students during that transition? So if you just look at this, if you, it's through September, so nine months, you're talking about 16, $50,000 of?
For one month.
For one month.
But the real is it's our responsibility. If we choose, correct, to do it, I mean.
If they, if they eliminate, if we choose to do it, then yes, this is the dollar value that now is gonna be a new.
No, I mean, even in that transition period, if we're, we're, we would have to pay it if they, right, if they decide they're going to, they would give you the money back, is what you're saying?
If they say during that transition period that we, the state will cover it, it's a, like we do, we submit, here's our bills and they reimburse us.
Right, but I'm saying, while they do it, we're still paying that until they decide that they're gonna reimburse, is what I, so we're, we're still responsible. We're gonna be paying for it.
Yes, we will have to pay for it until the state decides, A, they're gonna reimburse it, or B, if not, then that should, I prosper.
Right.
I think with the timing, I mean, this ends September 30th. We're already pushing it very close because we're almost halfway through September and parents need time, obviously. I think that would be a huge hit for some families. Obviously, this is just the families that don't qualify for free or reduced, right? So this is the?
So this would be reduced, they would have to start paying a portion and full price, yes. But we have.
But they need time to prepare, yeah.
And that's why the state says contact us for technical assistance and, right, get me through this, but we don't know who's.
The thing is, you're, you're absolutely right. But the thing is, we can't do anything about it because we don't know what they're doing. They have till September 30th to do something they should have done June 30th. You know what I mean?
Oh, I agree, yes.
There are families in this community, yes, that are in limbo. I get people randomly at Blue Devil Night ask me about the, the free, you know, lunch, how's that gonna work? And you're explaining to them what it is, but there's, we can't do anything about it. We're stuck with, when is, what is the state going to do? And then we have to decide from there, what financially can we afford to do for our families?
So that's why if we think it's not a number we want to commit to at all, then we have to start notifying parents that now for after September 30th.
Can we? What, notifying people now?
We would have to commit as a board to say, this isn't, I mean, at some point, you have to either commit to spend the money because there's gonna be a gap or give them enough notice and say, we're not willing to take that risk.
And I, but I think that time comes September 30th.
But then it's on us, right? Because it ends September 30th.
Program ends September 30th.
So then you're already committing.
And you have that 30 day, there's that, what he's talking about, that 30 day.
She wasn't quite sure, right?
Well, it's a bit 30 days, but it's whatever long, lengthy time it takes to get it through the process, the approval process. So 30 days minimally.
But then it could be.
Could be more, but I'm thinking maybe this is, this is an issue statewide, why it will be on it.
Yeah, and I'm just looking at it as, who knows? I mean, I don't have faith, but next week, a budget could be reached, they could decide to continue this and we just move along, you know? And so I just don't like talking about what, what, what we think we might be able to do or not be able to do until we know where we're at.
But so, if it ends September 30th, you've gotta submit the application, right? Starting then?
Right now, we've submitted the CEP program, so we're in that through the end of September, no, no question.
So when?
Those ones are already turned in.
Yes, we had to submit that by the end of September, August, we had to submit that we were gonna participate in this CEP program.
So when would we know if those, like you said, those 30 days were covered?
I don't know when, it will depend on what happens at the state. So they could decide, we're ending this program and there's going to be no more money spent after September 30th. They could decide, we're going to continue the program.
That's what I'm saying, if we are okay not ending it for family September 30th, we have to know we're gonna be paying potentially for October. You just have to go with, you would know like that.
Yeah. Oh, no, I'm, I'm not saying, I don't, my thing, when I said that to Brian, when, when he said, who is paying for it, my thing was, we're gonna be paying for it.
And we know they get it first.
Right, until they get this back or not. And so is, if, are you asking, is that something, sitting here talking right now, that we're willing to say?
Yeah.
We're gonna go.
Like we're gonna take October.
It's a bad conversation.
That's what I'm thinking. Now, if we committed to say, okay, we're gonna pay for October because we just don't know if they're gonna reimburse, could we then reverse that in November if we find out from here till mid-October, we find out that they're not, gonna continue the program?
I mean, my thought would be, we continue, we assume we're going to pay it until we get the transition complete. If they come along and say, sorry, schools, you know, we're not gonna continue this program past September, yes, we have the potential of having to pay for whatever that transition period is and to eat and absorb that cost in our budget.
Because I kind of remember from the last meeting, something about once we decide we have to keep it the rest of the year. What was that?
That was talking about the CEP program, but we've sent one that know you can, you can move your transition if you want.
That makes me flatter, okay. So we could agree to extend it for a month or to eat the cost, they decide, and then we could give parents enough notice once we find out.
Because that in essence could be the, the whole thing of, if, if, if we commit to saying that we would, we would do something, right, through the month of October, and then people would know if this comes through, that it's ending in September, parents have till the end of October, to understand that now you're paying for your own breakfast and lunch.
And we could have time, you guys could have time to work with those families that you think would qualify and get those applications.
Oh, definitely, we could be sending out those applications.
Because I think a lot of people, when, especially when it's free or reduced, a lot of people just probably toss, right? I'm sure they don't, my suggestion.
But also, a lot of people don't, we don't want to fill them on.
Sure.
You have to get past that thought process of fill it out.
So really working.
You know, they'll give you that time to do that if we bridge that.
Send something out, pushing for it.
Yes. Well, there's, there's some people.
You send out those ones every year.
Every year.
I know that there's, because they're paying for the programs. Absolutely. Consider, let's see.
Because you know, there's, there's families, when you think about it, when this, what, how many years, this five years that we've done free breakfast?
Well, you've got, these two years, this is year, would be year three. Prior to these years, you have basically the COVID dollars and all of those rules that were.
One that we had kids pay.
Yeah, there was one year, the 2223 that we flipped back and then they.
But I'm just saying that to my point, there are soft parents who have never had to pay for a school lunch and have had breakfast provided the whole entire time their child's spent in school. If you think about it, you know, your elementary age kids, you, you never had to because of how this program is gone. So that's a, that's a big change to all of a sudden, that's going to be different.
So I would advocate to at least commit through October and we just pay it and then it doesn't go through.
Yeah, I, I mean, to go along with it, maybe, you know, as we're committed to that one month for sure, and then maybe even. month for sure, and then maybe even would be worth sending a letter out with the, kind of the situation, and then our potential courses of action. You know, if this, then that, if this, then that, at least notifying your parents, hey, this is where we're at. I mean, we're kind of at the mercy of an upcoming budget, just so that they know when they see something that comes out, or also the program doesn't continue, they're not like in a shock, they're kind of.
Well, but the reality is, nobody should be in shock because we've already sent out a letter that has talked about it in the first place. But I think that maybe from this meeting, the information that talks about that we're good through December, I think is a huge thing to send out to families to know that the shape that we're in, that just think if the state does shut down, that we don't have to, because there are school districts that are not going to be in the same position we are.
There are school districts that already are not.
Are already not, right. But just to put something out, just based on this information we got tonight, that we are good, we're solid through here, and then maybe something in addition that with respect to this lunch and breakfast thing, that we, you know, as a board, we, we are committed that if this happens September 30th, we're committed through October, because committing anything after that, we have no idea what they're going to give us for money for school aid, you know, all of that stuff could be, you know, you're looking at that, that's a lot of money right there.
Yeah, Tammy, I have a good question regarding the budget. So if we were to pay, to say for June, or whatever, September, October, November, December, let's just go into September, the money, the past three months that you gave us, is there money there to do that?
If it's, if it's $50,000 a month, and we have November, October, and then December, we're right there.
Well, and December's all kind of a personal month, right?
We still have to pay for.
But you hit it.
You hit 175,000.
I know.
That would put us with $25,000 left.
Yeah, I know, exactly.
And we don't know if we'll be reimbursed.
I think the mindset, I think the mindset we need to realize here of the walkaway is, right now, we are, we had to align back in June, we're continuing as is. Nothing back in June led us to believe that we would be looking at this today.
On September 8th.
So we're making an assumption right now that the state, if they change their mind, is going to give schools an opportunity to undo what they selected, okay? Okay, statewide, they're going to have, so when you talk about, Sarah, your question about time, you really need to look at this as 60 days that we're going to pay, because let's assume October 10th, they pass a budget, 10 days after the thing. By the guidance that they're going to get, we'll probably get something on a good day, October 20th. We've already pretty much spent October. We're notifying parents by Thanksgiving, you ought to have the form turned in because December 1. So you really need to think of this in a worst case, we're on the hook for $100,000.
Right.
Assume the state's not going to reimburse us.
Right.
Well, the alternative would just be ending it on the 30th and sending communication out saying, starting October 1st, you have to qualify to get it. And again, I, I mean, I know things are expensive and times are tight, but we are talking about the families that don't qualify. So they're, and I don't know what the cutoff is in compliance, I have no idea, but the people who fill out the application and qualify by income will still get their meals covered or reduced.
Reduced.
So it's not like we're saying nobody's getting anything.
Well, some would be reduced, some would be full.
Yeah, there's the kind of, yes, yeah.
Well, there's already, so we already have sent out communications saying that we're doing it until September 30th.
Yes.
Correct?
My recommendation, Sarah.
No, that's what we've already sent out to the public.
Correct.
That we're good until September 30th. So they have, they do already have that notice, I suppose.
This would just be finalized.
Yeah, correct.
We got all over the land soon.
Why was here, Brian said, you started to say what his recommendation is, I was curious what it is.
My recommendation would not be to send anything out prior to October 1st, and the day September 30th, that we're changing this.
So you want to pay, commit to the two months, what do you?
I think that's, because we don't, there's so many unknowns here. I would hate for us to send panic into a family's lives that, hey, and I don't even know from a timeframe, it'd be after October 1, we give them notice and collect form. Oh, you didn't need to do that. So comes to October 1, the state doesn't have a budget, we put out something saying, hey, we committed to September 30th, as a board of school district, we're going to commit until the state, and I wrote down here, there's a resolution at the state regarding this topic.
Oh, yeah, okay, okay.
And if the state says, no, we're not paying for it, then as a board, we're back here saying, do we want to pay for it? Or do we want to start timeline up, start collecting the application? Because the state then made the decision. That's my only concern, is if I'm sending something out September 8th, September 9th, parents will be scrambling and thinking October 1, and realistically, in that 30-day window, we're really talking in mid-October. That's my only concern.
Well, and I know we, I know all the packets go out with the rest of school stuff to fill out the application, but I'm sure you guys follow up if people don't turn that stuff in, and, right?
We stay on it, and we have to remind people that, you know, turns in, especially those that have the qualify in the past.
That's what I'm thinking, that would be even more important this year. That way, you're reducing that number that you have to collect back from, so that would expedite it.
We did give parent raffles last year, turning those that turned it in, got a name entered into a raffle, we tried a lot.
And it is a form that we still have available online, so people can complete it online. For those that don't, or have questions, we can help through it, or we can give them a report or something. So, yeah, we try to make it as easy as possible on, on family, so they can, because it's important not just for the free and reduced lunch, it's also the extra title.
Yep.
And our, our funding that uses those numbers.
A fair statement to say we've had less turned in, which is affecting total Title 1 dollar, the total Title 2 dollar, which is all, it's all a down.
Yeah.
Because they just don't feel like they don't have to do it, they're already getting in.
Those that do it have another reason they need that form turned in for other support they have in the system.
Well, I think, like, that was brought up with students who, some parents who have never had to pay, like, I have children, so I've had to pay in the past, but students who have never had to pay, even myself looking at these numbers, I would have never thought, like, I've heard just through social media and other, you know, board meetings or reading news articles, that other districts are talking about absorbing the cost, whether it passes or not, and to, for, for that voice to be out there, and that, that narrative to be out there, and then for us to go saying, well, you know, we'll cover through November, that's not a bad thing, but they don't realize the impact that it had. It's not like anybody has $400, $500,000 just laying around as, you know, spare change to put into a program. Like, yes, it's small meal prices here and there, but it adds up. And those are huge numbers, and I didn't even realize personally that those numbers were that large. So I think having that number out there is huge, because they're essentially asking us to foot the bill, all of a sudden, we're just going to have another $500,000 bill that we didn't have the last five years as a, as a school district, and I think that's good information for parents to have out there, I mean, at least when the time, you know, time comes in some way, shape, or form, or, like, this, this slide is amazing, I think it's a great perspective on the whole thing, because it really adds up quick. And I don't think people realize it, they're like, oh, yeah, the district's just going to absorb it for me, you know, the state hasn't paid for it, but like, that's just another $500,000, another bill to pay for, and that's just not doable, like, that's just like asking somebody to double or triple their mortgage payment, you know, like, go ahead, refinance it, then you interest rates, and, you know, say yes, I want you to say you have to say yes, you're not allowed to say no, like, that makes no sense.
Well, especially a district our side, that is, there's just not.
Right.
Any other questions?
So the plan is, we're continuing it though, until we hear differently, is that the plan then? What's, what's the?
My recommendation to the board is the communication that goes out at the end of the month is we're committed to it, and we're on board, so until the state has a resolution to the breakfast and lunch. Whether that resolution is the House bill that puts all this and gives you a larger per pupil, or the Senate bill that keeps the category open.
Okay, but we're going to send the communication out at the end of the month.
I owe the families something, because I said in my last one, in August.
I think so, too.
We're, we're your deal, and at some point, prior to the end of September, that we need to let them know it, the cash flow that Tammy put up there, that the state's going to stop making the payments at school, but we're in good shape. The state's going to stop making payments to breakfast, but we can, we can continue cover till we figure out what the state's going to be, but some point.
Till the state figures out.
Till the state figure out.
But we'll highly encourage that.
To fill up all the forms. Fill up the forms we needed.
Thank you, Tammy. Okay, next item on our agenda is a presentation on board policy updates.
Okay, I'm going to go through each policy and just highlight the changes. Many of these policies are just one word or cleanup language from recommendations from the attorney. Board Policy 2504, participation, it's a change from public's personal mental rights, or not publics, they're individuals' personal mental rights. That's it.
Right. The only thing I have, you guys, if you look at number one, it says, a number of the public will state their name and address.
I know, we haven't been doing that.
We don't do that, and my question only is to reply, well, no, it's not what we want, it's, is this, is this a required legal thing? Because I absolutely hate that people have to state their name and address, I don't know why you have to give your address.
Especially when it's on our, it's written there on our podium, on our sheet for them to sign in.
I just, I just, I do not like that you stand up there and say your address on TV, I just, I don't like it. And so I don't know whether I've never really paid attention to that, Brian, when I highlighted it, because I just want to know.
I'll ask a question, there's some legal aspect that we have to, I'll also do a follow before the next meeting.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, so that, if stating it is, like, check that box by simply writing it on that paper, then fine, but if the plate markers, if you're trying to verbally say it, like, you don't really do that, it just says stated, just stating it, writing it down, does that satisfy?
Stated.
Does that satisfy?
Yeah, no, I think stated.
I think stated. I like to take out it, that's a lawyer.
Next one, Policy 3110, data breach, this, in the passage references, if we experience it, but also if we've noticed, received notice that there was a breach of our, our data, that we have to notify agencies and so forth, sort of update that data breach policy, not kind of what we ever have to implement that. 3115, we had done some of these revisions previously. This one gives the examples of moving from including to in the listing as part of the Elliott Larson Civil Rights Act, so it just gets us cleaned up in that angle.
Which one?
3115, the non-discrimination, anti-arrestment, and non-retaliation.
So go through that again, so we crossed it up, and then we added that.
Because it's not listed as an example of what sex is, it's listed as its own example of identity, of gender identity or expression or pregnancy. So before, before, those were in the sex definition, which was part of the, 2024 regulations, that that was in that definition, and when we went back to 2020 regulations, it's listed as an entity. It's not an example of sex, it's a separate entity.
So the way that it's written out, what we had in?
We had in the policy, and the strike through would come out, and we would move it out of the example of what sex is.
So you're saying in 2020, it read like this?
In 20, I got to get my, when we revised the policies in August of 24, it read like that. The strike through is there, the underlying wasn't. And in the regulations that we are going back to, which would be the 2020 regulations, sex is not gender identity in those regulations, but it is a, something someone's going to discriminate against. The basis on the 24, going back to the 20, was what is the definition of sex? I know there's a lot more, but I'm going to kind of jump back.
So initially, that means including, sex included, yeah, all that, now they're, we're taking that out because they're each separate.
Sex is not gender identity, it's just orientation.
I have other questions, but I'll, it was a thought of close actually, so I'll just go with you.
Okay. 35, or 3115A is the definitions. Again, it's the page, it really is changing what we just talked about in the definition to number 17, moving that out of the example, taking that parentheses off, what used to be as examples, so maybe the other policies. 35.
So, I'm sorry, just for clarity, so this is now changing, even though there's a societal change that was the.
This, this matches the statute. What this on 3115A are all the definitions that are in our sexual harassment policy. So number 17, the way it's listed aligns with 3115A, so it takes it out of the example and puts it as a separate entity. So sex is not.
Sex is not, sexual orientation, gender identity.
It's comp. I just got to remember 20 or 24, what we're talking about here. The next one is a form, generally, we don't approve forms at a board level, what we do for sexual harassment, or not discrimination, sex harassment, retaliation. This is changing who it's sent to, as well as you'll see throughout multiple policies. It used to go to Cleveland, Ohio, it now goes to Denver, Colorado, for the LCR complaints.
Oh, just the table one, Michigan. Yeah, Michigan's all right.
What page are we on?
I don't think it's, we're not on that one yet.
Yeah, okay.
Well, we'll get there. Okay, okay, well, just remember when we hit the, and I found the number two that I marked. It's when we add, when we add Sarah on, that's the one we have to look at.
Table 1, sexual harassment. We used to be able to put multiple, we're supposed to reasonably be able to separate complaints that should be invested in the policy. So the investigation of the policy is very specific, where you could have complaints, so it's separating that you use the form and the policy unless you could reasonably separate it. It's more about legal protection for us.
They did change the address to.
In the back, you're going to see that multiple time, the address changing from Cleveland, Ohio to Denver.
So this is the one with the form, the document that goes with it, right?
For which one?
Because I think there's two different.
The one we're on right now.
This is the 3118, yeah.
No.
Oh, 3118, yes. So there's a form there, and the form on there, that's for Michigan, so, yeah, keep going. Keep going, right, one more.
So the 3118F, which is the form for a sexual harassment complaint, Michigan needs to be correct. Again, it puts Sarah as the HR director, congratulations, Sarah, formally as our point person. person. Again, changing the location from Cleveland to Denver. 3121 is a new policy, my recommendation is that we just leave the words intentionally left blank. I provided this to you because your option is, and I would not recommend it, but you could have language that you could establish public school academies under the by-school code as a public school. So my recommendation to you is to just leave the words intentionally left blank.
So, so, I guess, what does that, that mean, what the definition, what is?
So basically, what you can do is, you could as a board make a motion or prove that we're gonna start a public school academy, Lee Elementary School, Richmond Middle School, Richmond High School, and a public academy of the school board, and you're gonna do an online school or an alternative school, but it's not a public school, it's a category charter school. Most charter schools, is your stuff by the university, you know, up here, or is it private? They don't make a bunch of this.
It's Manistee Public Schools.
So, Manistee Public Schools has opted to elect to do an online public school academy. Some universities do it, Central Michigan has separate.
Yeah, Central Michigan.
The ISD has one, it's the Arts Academy in the Woods, which is their public school academy. They may call it an academy, but I don't think it's a, it's by definition of a public school, I just think they changed the name, but I could be wrong, I don't know.
Thank you.
So, that would be my recommendation, I, kinda muddy as the water getting into the business of public school or charter schools and being a public school, but it's a possibility. Accounting 3201 is just a clarification in the Michigan School Code, the number was corrected. 3201A, financial management for federal awards, this one. This talks about federal awards and how we do capital asset accounting and disposing of federal equipment. There's a process, you're supposed to go, like, CTE equipment, if we purchase something with Title I, there's a process we are supposed to go through. This is talking about that process, how we account for those, which we do. Tammy has an internal system, and I know when we buy things, we, computers or high tech, we have a way of tracking what was purchased to what brands. 3211, post-assurance tax compliance, this one, again. This one had before, will provide a cost of training for debt compliance officers, not a requirement, and so that's why the language is changing that it can be trained in that compliance.
Why, why would it change from will to may?
Simply as if you don't, and you're, you may avoid some insurance coverage if you're required to do it, from that angle, I know it's hard, but we don't currently do specific training, debt compliance officers, training. It's part of probably MSBO training that they do in the, with the ISD. What did you call it, Miss Tammy?
There's lots of, you mentioned that. There's a lot from the ISD that I support, and any training order?
You can mostly find Michigan School Services officials, which ISD is actively involved in that one.
32. 3212, post issuance disclosure compliance. 3212 certifies that this definition of financial obligation only applies to the subsection when you look at it, C2B of this policy. So that's, when you look at that, those are the changes. 30301, thank you, purchasing procurement. If you recall, at some point, there was a, there was laws that required Michigan-based business preferences will be applied, will not apply to federal funds, but there is, under the Michigan School Code, you see, that is still the preference of Michigan, so it, I'm making sure I'm reading this right, Michigan-based business preference will not apply if federal funds are used, so regardless of federal state, our preferences for Michigan-based bidders. And then you see, it should have the, which is in the revised school code of what was done, I believe that was done two, two years ago, maybe the last, I'll be to that, I think, I think it was last December's. 3301A, regarding purchasing procurement, will we use federal funds, is it, this is the policy, will we use federal funds?
This is all due, right?
This is, this particular one is all due. There were questions, I know Tammy had talked to me about raising the threshold at 10,000, it's not recommended by the attorneys. Should make a lot of, a lot of times we get 10,000, 100,000. 3307 is construction administration, there's a revised school code correction in it. That's really it? There's a second page in there. 3402, drill plans, drills, plans, and reports, it cleans up because beginning this year, we may have certain drills, plans, it's taking out that beginning of 25, '26 school year. By January 25, which we've already done, we had the wastewater manager plan, which is required by law, which is part of what you're gonna, we're gonna talk about a little later on today in the filter system. Which really a cleanup of, just cleanup language. 3407, asbestos management. This is adding asbestos abatement language to contractors to make sure that, basically they have the ability, they're, they're, they can do what they said they're supposed to be doing, they have affidavits. Again, talking about criminal conviction, like we do employees, contractors who are asbestos, they also can do that.
Brian, with all of the work that we have done, like, how, like, do we still have a lot of this?
We do not have a lot of asbestos in the building, where we have it anymore in the ceiling, because we didn't touch at the end.
I still don't understand so much.
We have, we've done a lot of asbestos, Brian.
Yeah?
So basically, if we are, if the bond passes, and we're doing work that's adding on, and we're gonna have to touch that, that contractor's gonna have to have fears of that.
Brian, I'm sorry, can I pull back to 3301, 3A, where it says, if competitive bidding is recorded by law, any contract must be afforded to the lowest responsible bidder. Is that count for even on contracts and things that?
The, the law allows you, yes, you are supposed to have the lowest bid. The law allows the board to choose something other if you've got a valid reason to go with a higher bid. Let's say, for instance, during the, during the interview of the competitive bid, we found out that this bidding company didn't complete their job, they've had a performance issue, or we've had past history with them, that, that could be a reason that you're not.
That we just did with the bus?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, did we do it with the bus?
Right. So like on, like on the bus, we typically, we generally use one vendor because we have good relationships, we know their parts, we know how the buses work. When you switch buses, that could be problematic. It's like the schools that are adopting the board, they're, they have the electric buses. That's new for a lot of them in infrastructure, now that's probably four example, because they're not gonna come in low, those buses are pretty expensive.
So, when you have, if you have a vendor that you use and they did work for you or supplied parts for you, now all of a sudden you're having a new vendor that you have to look for new parts, so now instead of carrying parts for an international bus, maybe you have to carry bus, or parts for a Uber bus, and that, they have one Uber in the fleet, it's not a smart way to go, but maybe?
So we would have the flexibility?
Maybe the lowest bid doesn't have?
Yeah, you do have the ability to choose someone higher, but when all things equal and there's no issues, you're supposed to use the lowest bid. 3408, talking about, this is a new law that was passed, so we should be getting guidance from the Michigan Department of Health and Services, while communicating best practice for safety of firearms to parents, and no later than October 4. As of today, there is no guidance yet for this, so. But this was put into place last year.
I like how the district's responsible, where I believe a family or a parent.
4101, nondiscrimination, again, is similar to the other ones, taking gender identity and pregnancy out of the definition of sex and its own entity as part of the, our state law. 4101.
Just that, that's?
Is there another part?
I'm sorry, 4101, later on, the third page, it talks about the Michigan-paid medical leave, it's actually called the Earn Sick Time Act, so it cleans up that language, being compliance with that. Whistleblower, the 4103, it identifies in the policy who the employment compliance officer is, 3115, it just identified to that person in that policy. 4105B, religious workplace accommodations. Before, I'd will meet with employees to start, it's to begin, so it's starting, I can meet with you and don't start the interactive processes, it's saying you're starting that process.
I was just gonna say.
Pardon?
There's just a table on that one, too.
So if you, instead of the?
Yeah.
They, they will.
4106, Family Medical Leave Act. References Earn Sick Time Act, removing Paid Medical Leave Act in this one. Yep, that's it. 4113, the Michigan Earn Sick Time Act. I don't show that we approved this particular one in March, so this was new policies that was done in March. We had, we approved, and I look back, what we sent out to the employees, the notice that we did, and we had it, but this is the actual policy dealing with Earn Sick Time Act. So we're in compliance because we did the notice and everything, but this is the actual policy that the notices back up, who are referred to.
The next one's just the front.
That's a point.
The next one's the front, sorry. This is what you approved, but we approved more specific, but this is just kinda giving the general framework, so Sarah would insert the position, custodian, who would serve, like we've done now, and then we base the hours, especially if they're a part-time person. 4221, employee speech. This deals with a recent legislative, or I should say Supreme Court case dealing with employee speech, or talks about if a parent objects to the instructional materials, employees will refer the parent to a policy, and then we're gonna talk about that policy in 51, so if there's something that's objectionable, there's a process that we're gonna talk about coming up. 4403, performance evaluation, we no longer have minimally or ineffective, from those 23, 24, just take out obsolete language. We do tri-annuals for our performance, so basically, if a teacher has an effective rating for, for the previous three years, thank you, then we don't have to do, we're evaluating that for three more, so it always looks back on the past. 4407, discipline. This is dealing with at the end, extracurricular positions, which realize unless it's provided in the capex, the employee is not made a discipline for any reason. Unless a contract specifically says something differently for these positions, then there's a, we follow the discipline policy. Termination, basically aligns with the current, 4408, termination aligns the termination of employee, again, unless it's defined by the collective bargaining agreement, the board has the ability to terminate for reasons for not the arbitrary conclusion. And again, it references termination, it goes to extracurricular positions, too. Nonrenewal, which is 4409, again, aligns with the new legislation of effective ratings, three months, year-end ratings, et cetera, it cleans up our policy to align with the current law and practice. Age of majority, we often have students that turn 18 during the school year, so they can, what, if they emancipate themselves from their parents or are age of majority through the weather process, so they can make decisions to their special education in 504, if they're 18, they could represent themselves during a discipline hearing, so their parents there, older than you. 202, adding the Denver, Colorado Civil Rights Address, it's going to change, and they don't know why the other language wasn't stricken out, but it's a change of address that we've talked about. 5401, parent involvement in education, and that strike through in Guardian was already out there, and I forgot to remove it, that's not a new, it's already taken, Guardian out. If you recall, when we did the policies last year, parent, we changed the definition of parent. But this one talks about, in, a copy of this policy must be included in the student handbook, so we will incorporate this policy into the handbook. There's a lot that is stricken because it wasn't required, but basically, for Title Ones, there is a parent involvement policy, which we have for Title One, it's not required that you have the compact that identified like this, that we used to have in the past. 5405, parent involvement, parent engagement, this policy is reviewed and amended, parents will have an opportunity to provide meaningful impact, which generally do it at a board meeting. What we define as parent engagement, and it listed here, is what we're looking for.
Brian, a little quick on that one, in the heading, 5405, it says Title, that needs correcting. And then, I guess, the policy.
Yep, I missed it, I had her.
Yeah.
Brian, on this first page, the third paragraph, this policy includes the school parent, is that supposed to be contract?
Contact.
Or contact?
Third paragraph?
It's a cross out a component, this, this policy includes a school parent, says compact?
Compact, so in Title One, you're supposed to have a compact.
Compact is the right word?
Yeah, you're supposed to have, here's what teachers do, here's what schools administrators do, here's what parents, call it a compact. In the previous policy, it listed with that compact, we don't need to do that specifically. We don't need to be that specific. Really just cleaning up Title One requirements that were changes in the policy. There's nothing. And when you look at each one of these, we're doing it some fashion. In the previous policy, you had the option of listing specifically what you're doing. And this one says, okay, we're going to provide materials to help parents work with their children at home. We do that with parent nights at the building. Again, I just picked one random one. Provide assistance to parents and children served by the district with topics like understanding state standard, understanding Title. We hold parent meetings, and they'll come, but we hold them. In the previous policy, it listed, or the previous version, it recommended you list specific ones. They're not recommending that in this policy. Fifty-four oh six, title funds. They're including, also include, this also, these requirements also include for Perkins Five Funds. Well, the changes there. Fifty-four oh seven, instructional programming. This will be the process if someone objects to the instructional materials. The first level is a review of the building principal level. The second level is at the superintendent's review. And the option, I, you can either have the superintendent be the end-all or a review committee. My recommendation is that there's a review committee. So if there's some objectional material at the elementary level, we're pulling in Billy, we're pulling an elementary person, someone who's objective, to look at that material, and then the committee makes whether or not it's objective.
So it's a review committee?
It's a review.
Superintendent, it's not the same committee every time, a committee picked based on the situation?
Yes, it would be, whether we're talking about health, or we're talking about book read in third grade. You may look at the context of that. And this is based on, you see, the legal authority, a recent court case. And then attached to this fifty-four oh seven is the form that a parent would say, I want to opt out for these reasons, and then would start that review process. This is not for sex ed or families, it's something totally different. That's a whole different set of guidelines.
Please.
Promotion, retention. In the past policy, the superintendent or does he have the final decision? It's only if it's consistent with law. So where this, I think the biggest example of the cases that I've heard is I, if the, an IEP team decides that it's best for the student to go on, I can't undermine what the IEP says. That's the example that's been shared with us, as the superintendent. Sex education, so you're going to see two parts here. The first part is our current policy, there are no changes. That is my recommendation. The second part of this is in yellow. If you want sex education to be taught in the district, then this would be the policy that we would need. And you're going to see some strike throughs that would have been in the policy if we had it, that we would need to make adjustments to. There's some strike through in red. Again, my recommendation is that we just keep existing policy, but I want you to see the options. Because if you're opting for option two to sex ed, then there's a process we have to go through to get that started.
Can't really put that in the policy then, though, if we don't, do you know what I'm saying? Until we have, unless if we decide you could go that way, we need to get the panel and everything before we put it in policy, right?
So my recommendation is if you're, come next meeting, you say you want, you want option two, then my direction to me is we keep the policy, and by the end of the year, we're adopting policy two after all the pieces that have been placed. Thank you, your recommendation. Work-based learning. Previously, it was work-based learning coordinator. It gives you the option, it could be a CT program teacher, could be one of our teachers, it could be our principal, who's considered that Jennifer, or Andrews, is our work-based learning coordinator. Fifty-six oh three, section five oh four, references policies for discrimination, which is thirty-one fifteen to thirty-one fifteen H, as well as that policy. Fifty-two oh two with the students. Abuse and Neglect, fifty-one, or excuse me, fifty-seven oh one. It includes mandated reporters as physical therapists, assistants, occupational therapists, and athletic trainers. And I think it's important that these included, so if we ever go down the road hiring an athletic trainer, they are part of a mandated reporter. Fifty-seven oh seven, which is school wellness. Meal modifications, it identifies when we have to make reasonable meal modifications for students with disabilities, such as section five oh four. And we do that already. Kathy, as a student that can't eat certain things, who needs an alternate meal, they do that. And then you'll see it adjust the numbering throughout the policy. And then the legal authority is what's been added to this. If there was a, I don't know the specific example, but I'm speculating that someone didn't make an accommodation in the court rule, you have to make reasonable accommodations. Concussion awareness, prior to the old policy basis, I really doubt the student athletes had to be removed from games and practices. If someone has a concussion, it's not only the games, but also if they're in physical education classes, they need to hear of. Which makes sense.
Yeah, well, their parents should be writing letters.
And that's it.
Any questions?
So I'm going to get the follow-up on the, do we really need to state the names and addresses on that one?
I'm saying we never, ever required that, and so.
Okay, that's PII on YouTube too.
It just went out publicly. Okay, next item on our agenda is our Blue Devil raves. Margaret?
Just thinking and raving about all the staff that had helped with, on stuff. I was with the group that stuffed, or, you know, stuffed whatever.
Put the pencils in the garden.
At the parade, there's just a huge group that afternoon that Brian thought was going to be a three-day process, and it was about a two and a half hour process with the people that were there. So kudos to them being the first day of school and with all that could have been going on, that they were there helping the district, it was great. And for the staff that walked with us in the parade yesterday, that was great too and fun. And it's just really good to see the staff that comes out and helps us promote whom and what we are.
Thank you. Candace?
I just wanted to also go with what Margaret said, special thanks to all of the educational pressures and even currently coming up with lectures and town hall meetings that we're going to be speaking in in the next few months. Special thanks to Miss Kimmy, who took extra time training for the parade yesterday with me. We were kind of the caboose. Came on time, so we no longer see the bus. We were trying to get, everybody did already get a flyer, so thank you to her for that. Shout out to Ms. Shaq and the boosters, and all the parents who have been working very hard the past two or three weeks. The Richmond band is looking very good, it sounded very good. We had our first halftime show that last Friday evening, and they sounded very good. And thanks to all of our twelve club, but that takes a lot of skill.
Actually, it's not an emergency.
It's a different, that's not, that's not a bug.
No, it's a sad, I'm saying it's an emergency.
Do you have any news that you're worried about?
Yeah, tornado.
I thought it was the emergency badges. That's not, that's a different sound, that's a whole. I don't say anything for weather related.
I was just going to say, when that comes across her.
I want to see if we see anything.
Candace, come on.
And you know what, I believe that was it. Thank you to Brian too, for just every day doing something, every day.
A lot of people helping out here.
Danielle?
Thank you, Candace. I just noticed last week, for the first week of school, all the elementary kiddos and the teachers going out of their way to help out when students were not knowing what teacher they were with, or where they were supposed to be going. And seeing some teachers and administrators and things doing that extra one percent, just like the run flag fluke in a major Friday. I did a little extra one percent for a couple of teachers in the elementary building too. So just encourage everybody to keep doing that throughout the school year and don't let it fizzle.
Um, Rina?
Just to echo the comments and sentiment of what we're already hearing about all the staff, we need to come together and support our efforts.
Thank you. Sandy?
Just wanted to thank Barbara Toto for reading my rave last meeting, I appreciate that, thank you. But also, I wanted to just say, I've heard so many good things about the first day of school and the kids, and parents even not feeling very welcome. I have a great niece that's a kindergarten, so that's her first time over here, so it was very cool for them. So they were very excited about it, so they told everybody about it. So kudos to, I guess, especially the elementary school, because that's the ones I, when I heard most about. I'm sure the other schools are good too. And then also, just real quickly, I, all of the staff and the administrators that participated in the parade yesterday was amazing. I think that was our biggest turnout ever, and last year was a great turnout as well. So it just keeps getting bigger and better, and so that's awesome. It just shows how much they support the district and the kids and stuff. So thank you so much for doing that.
Just to apologize for not being at the parade yesterday, so thanks to everyone who did make it. I volunteer at Good Old Days, so I was actually running an event, and I had to be there before the parade ended. So I just wanted to let it, I don't know why I wasn't there, otherwise I would have been there. So thanks for getting that, somehow I couldn't be there.
I just wish to add, pretty much what everybody has said here, I had the band down, they did a great job, what they're doing and the parents, and that goes from the night, I was at the football game the night before, and all the support there, and how they clean up afterwards, and same thing after they were done marching the band. Thank you to the bus driver, I don't know her name, who drove the bus yesterday in our parade. She did a great job. Thank you to our students, we had plenty of our football players on there, cheerleaders, I don't want to miss anybody, that participated in the parade yesterday. It was, it was a really nice turnout. And thank you to our staff, again, who was at the parade yesterday. We had a nice group, good group, we did, I think we did better this year, we didn't run as much.
Because we had so much help, there were so many.
Yeah, and maybe that's what it was, we had more help coming, so we were not running all over the place. So that worked out really well. And I also, I worked the Blue Devil days, and I just wanted to really thank the staff. It was so cool being at the elementary school, because we had a lot of new, new parents. And I worked with Billy on it, who had no clue, you know, the building or anything. And so we kind of got into a routine with Mr. Gibson over there. So as we had a parent who didn't know, we'd get him to take them around and things like that. Again, same thing at the middle school, not as much at the middle school, because I know we were there later. The high school, again, good group, everybody real supportive. I found out, ladies, about the urgency to get a parking pass. Anyway, so this community has really, really pulled together here within the last, you know, couple of weeks with everything that's been going on, and I truly appreciate it, I think we did a great job. So thank you.
Okay, next item on our agenda, ladies, is our student board, so Kelsey and Elizabeth.
So last week was a good week for all of Richmond schools, and we do have events coming up as well. So for the high school, we have a homecoming planned, they're underway, and we have forty students attend the first student development meeting this term. Patriot Day is next Tuesday, September sixteen. And some of our teacher cadets, mostly year threes, have to go places to go blow the lead and the smoke. In our school, we had an excellent Blue Devil night with a different number of families in attendance. Positive energy was contagious, making our official beginning in the handbook. The first week of school was a great success, with our students clearly ready to be back and ready to learn. We were so excited for love, of so many new faces along familiar lines. Just pull the mic a little bit closer. Try it now. And D V testing begins this week at RMS, and will continue through October second. All students will be tested in math, reading, and language usage. Fall sports are underway, with our football team doing well at their first scrimmage on spring. Volleyball and house country begin this week, and our football team plays their first official game on Thursday. Any of our clubs will begin with a new, next few weeks, as we encourage our students to sign up for both the U of A and the U of A. Ms. Mila and Mr. Knight would like to thank our JHS students for their help during Blue Devils night and filling our Smile Day t-shirts. More about Smile Day and the coming days.
Lee Elementary is buzzing with excitement the first week of school. Parents and students are welcomed, and were welcomed with music and dancing. Our school had an amazing start to its school year, tears, cheering, and smiles, and they're in really great relationships with their peers and teachers. They had an amazing turnout at Blue Devil night, and they are excited for their 2025 and 2026 school year. They have their first PBIS assembly coming up, it'll be based on belonging, and they'll do their health sorting based off of Ron Clark Academy. So Lee Elementary is a place where everyone belongs. For athletics, the first week was really good for September. Boys soccer won against Austin Catholic, Algonquin, and Davidson. They had their game saver sealed. And then girls volleyball had a quad match on September second, where they took on Barber, is that Marion? Okay, Marion and Notre Dame Prep. On the fourth, JV football won 26 to 6 against Yale. And the fifth, first equal ball won 21 to 0 against Yale. The energy was really good at that game. The next team is Friday, and it's USA team versus Cross Legs. And then watch out on the track Friday for some of Richmond's little cheerleaders, kids ages 12, five through 12, for attending the camp this Thursday, and will be cheering the first quarter at our USA game.
Thank you very much. Okay, next item on our agenda is our superintendent for, I just want to update the strong side.
So I'll start with the district update. It's been said here many times, the last two weeks, we've lost not only the staff, but also our students. It's been a great start to a school year. The staff has had a lot of positives on their professional development. Our keynote speaker was Kim Bearden, co-founder of Ron Clark Academy. She really focused on the emphasis of building authentic relationships with students, as well as staff and colleagues, and being that one percent better. At the end of the week, we had a district-wide session by Dr. Sean Bishop, who talked about artificial intelligence and the world our students are growing up in. There was a lot of note-taking, a lot of ideas and strategies to use and incorporate. But I think the big takeaway is, we need to have a conversation with our students, because if we're not helping them guide through this uncharted territory, as far as what's appropriate, what's not, when to use it, when not, we're leaving them up to themselves to do what they think, and it may not be the best decision. So a lot of ideas in staff, I know Ms. Barb, who was at the tent, has already used it in childcare. She talked about some of the descriptive words and creating storybooks unique to kids and so forth. It was really a phenomenal event, at least I thought it was. And I had a lot of staff complimenting, really talking about their plans for this year. We ended Thursday with our Richmond alumna, alumna, attorney of law, Jennifer Starlin. We did our legal updates, which is always a good thing. In that legal update, she talked about these parent opt-outs and so forth, that policy. So we're good timing. This last week was a great first week. Kudos to Tracy Thornburg, our pupil accounting registrar, and Sarah. We have been enrolling kids, enrolling kids, and it's been all hands on deck. We've had people from the business office helping, we've had Margie helping, we've had anybody and everybody to get families in, and this week we still got a, and our school choice window did close last Friday, so the registrations were getting to this point, their district resident, I think they had eight scheduled this week, I think it was, and those are people who've moved into the district. So all those enrollment forecasts, I mean, it's coming right now. I believe we're about 35 up from where we were in June. Upcoming dates that you hear, we'll have another board meeting, but homecoming's coming up very soon. So September 26th is the homecoming parade and the football game, which will be coming up very, very soon. September 27th is the dance. That following Sunday, we have our academic hall of honor and athletic hall of fame at 1 o'clock in the auditorium. And then, believe it or not, county day's coming up, October 1st, so everything's moving very quickly. Just wanted to remind the community and the board, if you haven't, refer to the information on the bond proposal, as mentioned many times here tonight. We've been going out there, talking to community groups. We had a lot of conversations this week at Good Old Days. The page has been updated, just from the perspective of, these are all the meetings and sessions that we've gone through or tried to get the message out there. These are all the ones that are scheduled to come. We have also on here, I did an interview with the city of Richmond, so that's at the bottom, if you want to look at that. We have all our flyers that are out there. The one that's going out this coming Wednesday will be Lee Elementary School, so look for this flyer in your mailbox on Wednesday. This is one we passed out at Good Old Days and continue to pass out, but here's the video if you want to look at it. So I can honestly say, looking at this and just comparing out other districts, there's a lot of information and we are extremely transparent. I mean, I encourage people, click on the bond app. They will actually show you the rooms and the budget, the dollars and so forth. We had questions this weekend regarding the millage rate. This is the actual forms that we have and the actual projection of where we are for millage rate, and this is the reason why we can say no increase. So if you have a question, ask, don't try to make it up, but we're all here to give you the information. From a legislative session, the, there's no budget, as I've mentioned, or no progress made on the budget. Despite the legislators being in session last week, we are, we're having really much luck getting anywhere. Hopefully, there's some behind-the-doors conversations happening. You saw today with, from Tammy, that we are in really good shape when you consider the big picture on weathering and activity in Lansing. That's a political way to say it. I do want to share with you this. We do know the House passed their general fund budget. We have the Senate version of the school aid budget last year, I said last year, before June, and we have the House version and we had the governor's version. None of the school aid budgets are really being talked about or adjusted at this point, but I think this is important to share based on what we know on the House general fund. As you know, our ISD is probably the best ISD when it comes to looking at numbers and analyzing and so forth. So what they put together, and that's what I'd like to share with you, is this document here, so I have one if you want to look at it. I think I have one short either this way or that way, but this is the House budget, the general fund budget, and what they, the shell game they're playing. So you're going to see here, and I'll do line one, a House bill, 4180 and 4182 that was passed, exempts motor fuel, exempts motor fuel and from sales and use tax. That decision takes $700,000 out of the school aid budget and removes another $104,000 billion, not thousand, billion dollars out of the general fund. The House bill proposes an increase in the motor fuel tax, and that increase goes to 100% transportation. This is how they're paying for the roads. So the transportation fund would see a net increase of $1 billion. Move down earmarking income tax to replace some of the other taxes. By earmarking, $755 million would go to school aid. The general fund would lose $850 million. There's a question on this MBT rate change, and I don't, I don't know a whole lot about that, I'm still learning all, but it's a net zero at this one, at this point. Changing the CTI distribution change would take it out of the general fund and put it into the transportation. So you can see the net, transportation would get the 3.2 billion that they've been looking for since this conversation started.
What is the CIT?
I'll give you, just a minute.
Sorry.
When we look at under the education, how that affects it, the House bill 4580 takes general ed costs out of skate, school aid, and pays for higher education, colleges and universities. That's a billion dollars they're taking out of the school aid fund to pay for higher education. At the very bottom, it's important to remember, they're already taking $800 million out of school aid to pay for, so we're getting close to almost $2 billion out of the school aid fund to pay for colleges and universities.
So that's where the free college is coming from, is from the high schools? Am I attributing that correctly?
That's part of it, but also the universities get money from the state aid, and they can get a per pupil allocation, but they also raise tuition 4%. So it's usually a cap that they allow them to raise, but they can still raise. Yes, it's a, it's a shell game of where they're paying for all of this from. But the net on this one is important, the $2 billion in the House bill that was passed and what they currently are doing, almost $2 billion is coming out of the school aid fund for higher education. Various reserve fund, one-time funding, all those categoricals we've been talking about, they're basically taking them and putting them into the school aid, which is about a billion dollars. Increasing the dimmers cost. They're going to pay for it out of the school aid, but remember on the district on our end, that was supposed to come down on October 1st, which is about $593 million. That goes away and they're going to pay for that difference out of the school aid. So when you look at the total, it's $675 million that they're putting into the school aid, which may sound really good. But when you take out all the one-time use money that they only budgeted for one time, a billion dollars, they've created a structural deficit in the school aid fund of $476 million. So when you look at the House school aid budget for Richmond, it looks on paper very good, but when you do all the shuffling, the net losses of the categorical and you're putting on, it's not, it's not that good for us over time. This, like I said, this retirement cost, line eight, is only for public schools. It's not for charter schools. Things to think about, line number 12, there's notes, these were, these are from notes that we see. This package gets under $2.2 billion to fix the roads. $2 billion of the general fund is created through cuts to program. You might have heard on the news, different departments in the general fund that are potentially under the House bill getting cuts. That's how they're getting, they're cutting that to, that's that CTI distribution. $2 billion are being cut in departments throughout the general fund. And then I just, I added the 14 and 15 line as a reminder, this year, we did not get a per pupil increase, but charter schools did, and then currently the school aid, aid is spelled wrong, apologies, it's A F D, is $800 million currently out of the school aid fund. So in our conversation is, if the current House school aid fund is passed, as is, signed into law, and the current House road build is passed, there's not enough money to do both. So the House, if this is the general fund that's going to go through and potentially be, they're going to have to adjust the school aid to account for some type of reduction.
No, they're going to increase our fuel tax for more.
Just I thought it was interesting, and Chris, if the ISD forgiven us, it's a, it's just a, you know, they're very on top of anything moving in and basically costing enough to see what the impact's going to be. The last thing I have for legislative update is not much is passed, so when something passes, I want to give kudos that they've done something, but House bill 50, or House bill 4024, they did pass at the House level, it's on the way to the Senate. Basically, restroom stalls have to be based on your biological sex, so if a male biologic that can only use the male stall. Way, despite your, anybody's position on the, the argument, the problem with this bill, it's not so much in Richmond because what we do, what they didn't take into consideration is emergency drills. In some schools, a bathroom is a place where you go to during a tornado. I found out today, we don't put kids in bathrooms, we do hallways and so forth, but my prior district, we had many times, we would put a class in a bathroom that violates the law. They haven't thought this through. There are issues that if I have a female coach coaching a male sport, there are times that obstacles do, I mean, there's, they go in because there's an issue that the law prohibits that from happening. So I hope is that this does become law, that on the Senate side, some of these nuances are fixed before it becomes permanent law, because this could be, could be problematic just in the implementation.
What's, what's the name or the number of?
The number of this bill is?
4024?
4024, House bill. And I think we've seen here many times, sometimes when bills get rushed through, they don't think the consequences, and this is, this is just a small piece, and I might use this as an example, but it's a small piece of the bigger problem we have. Because I know in the budget discussions, they're talking about adjusting, there has been conversations dealing with property tax, we're talking about poll play, you're talking about other things that have took years to put in place, and you're going to adjust things in weeks, it's just not good policy, so. That's all.
That's what's most important, is a bill like that as opposed to getting a budget.
A budget, yeah.
That's all.
Do you have any questions?
No questions, but just on a positive note, I just want to say real quickly, you know, that I keep hearing all this stuff about the Ron Clark Academy and how all of these teachers and staff have like implemented all this stuff, and they seem real excited about it, so I just wanted to say, that's, that's almost like brings like new life into a lot of the staff, I feel like, you know, having experience for that, and so just thank you for making that so accessible. I mean, that's really, I think, done a lot for the staff, so thank you. You did talk about that in that whole thing, that's why.
Just to wrap it, the key of that is we're not duplicating that, we're what works for us in our school.
Right, right, yes.
You're absolutely right. Staff is re-energized, ideas, possibilities. There's not a ceiling. There's a lot that we can do, and the House system, the elementary school.
That's like, really.
I can't wait to see that, see that for a while. And it will take, it will be baby steps, but we'll, we'll do.
Okay, next item on our agenda is our items of interest. Candace?
So I just, I just thought I would share one thing that was brought to mind of Ryan's attention when we held out at the booth on Saturday. I just thought I'd share with the rest of the board. There was a gentleman that came up and, in so many words, urged us to think about using union-based companies to do some of our bond work. That was one of the concerns that he had, so I thought that I would just share that with you guys for future thoughts when that time comes, just wanted to share that. And the other thing is, I did receive this in the mail for the scarecrow. I, oh, I know we have a couple of reporters. We chose to do one of the scarecrows in town from the school board, it's been a couple years, so I don't know if anybody is interested in being crafty.
Like I say every year, love it, I'm not crafty. But I want to put it, that's what I'm going to do. I'm not crafty, but I'll help put it all together and set it up.
Yeah, I'll help too.
Yeah, what was the timeline on that?
Yeah, what do we have to have it up?
Mid-October.
Beginning of October.
I feel like with me being on the parking record since I vote, I really shouldn't help you, because that might be a conflict.
Now that we know. Well, maybe we'll win.
I don't want to judge. That's why I don't think I should, construction at all.
Well, now that you say that, I got a couple of votes.
After the meeting, please.
Okay, no, it says that it has to be set up, the weekend is Saturday, October 12th, so by the 13th on Sunday, and then they'll be taken down on November 15th.
I say, why not be done?
I know, yeah, I'm going to do it.
Yeah.
I mean, you've done an amazing job.
No, I, I'm all out of ideas.
I can't.
Candace is going to lead it, well, whoever's interested, like, I don't know.
If you, is it, I think there's a fee, isn't there?
$10, right?
So if you get that, get to me, then I'll get that prepaid.
Okay, anyone has any ideas, share them. Make it work. Anything else? And, no, that's it, thank you.
Sandy?
So I'm sorry, I do have a few, just because I wasn't here at the last meeting. I did watch the last meeting and I did read the minutes, so I'm pretty up to date, and I just, I just cannot express my displeased pleasure or whatever, I don't even know my disgusting, I'm disgusted with the state and the fact that we have no budget. So just curious though, did, did we get the letter out that you had sent the letters out? Okay, great, thank you. And then, well, first and foremost, I probably should welcome Elizabeth back, thank you for being here, and also Kelsey, welcome to the board, I may get a chance to do that on next meeting because I wasn't here. I should have started with that. I also have, let's see. Oh, on, on the last meeting, we, we did, we approved some repairs to be done to the parking lot, and I'm just curious, I was just thinking about it today, actually, is there an opportunity for us to, I don't know, subrogate against the company that did the work in the first place as to why we had to have repairs done? Because wasn't this just done not that long ago? That's my, like, wasn't the parking lot there done not that long ago?
It, it was done in the 19, I don't remember when summer it was done. The original scope of the bond was a complete pull-up and tear-out of the whole parking lot. When they pulled up the asphalt and they tested the soil, the samples came back as you don't need to pull it up itself. So we didn't pull up the bond with, or the soil, which was part of the original scope. We just pulled the asphalt and we redid the asphalt. So I don't know the answer to the question, other than when the contractor bid on it, they were planning on pulling everything up. When they did the soil test, there was no need to pull everything up, and so it was a reduction in the cost of the project.
Sure, but we, we, whoever tested the soil gave us wrong information. I'm not, I'm just saying, you know, I'm just curious if there's any opportunity for subrogation in that, because we, of course, are going to rely on these professionals to tell us whether or not we need a complete tear-out or not. We reply, we relied on an information that information was incorrect. I mean, is that not why, I mean, what happened? You know what I mean? Like, isn't that why we ended up in the situation we ended up in?
Well, there was a pipe that wasn't on the scope of the drawings, and they, they didn't test the severity of the pipe, so we didn't know that pipe existed, and it wasn't into a drain. Catch me. Catch me if you can.
Okay, and I don't know if it's our fault, yeah, but like, I just think that the company would have known that there was a pipe there, that did the work, or that whoever they relied on to do it, you know what I'm saying, to give them the information. Like, because I understand, they may have relied on a different company to get the information, and then that company relied on them, and then they did the work, a different person, you know, a place did the work, like, I understand that, but, I'm just, yeah, I just think that we should look at it a little bit more, thank you. I'm not sure, hold on. Okay, yeah, and then we have, in the past, we have had a committee for the, for the appreciation, staff appreciation celebration, and last year, we kind of got a little bit of a late start on that. I saw in the calendar that there's already a date for that, and I'm guessing it's just a, you know, approximate, you know, date in the detailed calendar, and, so I just don't know if, like, we should start that now, and start the committee now, so we can at least get the venue in order, you know, I mean, I don't know, I feel like we kind of, we kind of were, had to get it together quite last year.
It creeps up.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, it does come fast, yeah.
I don't know. We're at the next meeting, whatever, think about it.
Okay, let's do that, and then I'll bring out the agenda for everybody.
That'd be great.
Yeah, interested in getting on that committee.
Yeah, just so we can start figuring things out, I guess.
No, I think it's a good idea, then we're not rushing around.
Right. Okay, and I think, I think that's it. I'm sorry, I know I have a lot of little chicken scratch here, I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Danielle?
I'm good.
Sarah?
I'm good.
Raymond?
A couple of things, going back to a couple of board meetings ago, and this one would be for you, Billy, when we were talking about the standards-based grading, a question I, I thought of, but at the time, didn't ask. It was mentioned that the Shine program is kind of tied into the standards-based grading. Can, can you explain more of how that, how that works?
Sure. Very familiar with Shine, do you need more explanation on what?
I will take more explanation, please.
Okay, so, with Dan, oftentimes in traditional grading, there's a component built in for kind of those behavioral pieces, so it might be participation, or coming to class prepared with your materials, so those things are sometimes added into the grade that you receive through the class?
I mean, probably citizenship might have been on our report, or at least it was on mine, where you had like made attention grades, so that might be what it was, a section of the report, and that was on your, I know it was on mine.
And so that's, so that's its own kind of various, I don't say various, because it's tied together, but it's, it's highlighted through that Shine, and I'm not, I forget what each of the letters stands for, but it's a pattern for their citizenship qualities. And so, it just, because we're not including that in the grade, because the grade is only based on the standards, that still allows us to make that a very important piece that the students are learning, they're learning those responsibility things that we want our students to be responsible about, that way, versus as part of their grade in the classroom, so that's how that is to offer up here.
Okay, but, but it just, their behavior does impact their grade with the standards?
So not their proficiency score at all, so not their P, or their, you know, proficient, not proficient, not that at all, that would be part of their Shine score, I guess, if you want to call it scoring. So that's where, and then based on that, the Shine, you know, there's different things they can earn, or, you know, privileges they can lose based on that.
You might be referring to, in fact, you are correct, if you're, I misunderstood you, but we talked about in this year's report, right, there's any new evidence?
No evidence, right.
No evidence. So if my behavior is, I'm not turning in work, I'm not doing something, then yes, that's gonna affect my proficiency, because I'm having any, no evidence, if I didn't give the teacher something to prove it. But if I'm doing the work and showing for them, then that's gonna be based on your standard, did you meet the standard now? But I could be a disrespectful student and still do the work, and that's gonna come out in the Shine part, which are your learning qualities, respectful, I'm trying to get, I don't remember all of the others. It's a citizenship grade.
But it's not really a grade.
No, it's, no, it's not an A, B, C, it's not a one, yeah, it's...
The, the standards base is strictly your academic piece, whereas in the days I went to, we would add in our citizenship, and everything would all be in that grade, and we are not doing that.
Right, well, that tells my confusion, because it was mentioned, well, it's part of it, but I was like, okay, well, so like, how is it part of it?
Right, so it's part of what we're teaching them, it's not part of the proficiency score. So, yeah, that was gonna be the hypothesis, it's definitely not part of the proficiency score, for the standard, it's a separate entity.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that. And then, the other one, is kind of, Brian, over this past Saturday at the booth, we had a, kind of, a short conversation about the status of the school resource officer, and I don't know if this may be budget-related, because you had mentioned that the resource officer, in part, is based off of grants that we received from the state to fund that, and so if you could refresh again, what the status is of the, the school resource officer?
So if you recall, last year, we budgeted the school resource officers X number of days and X amount, off the top of my head, and at some point last year, I reported to the board that the hours that we had budgeted for, and the hours the actual resource officer worked, were differences. And so, when we had a meeting with the city, I don't remember the date, it was sometime last school year, we were trying to fix that, so that if we were expecting him to make the three, he was gonna be here. So, at the end of the year, the city agreed that whatever hours we, he was documented as being here, and we have him signing in and out every day at every building, or the days he's here at every building, that's what we would be billed for. So what we planned for, and what we actually paid, are two different numbers. Now, fast forward into this year, we're having a conversation, and that's to schedule that resource officer, the time. So, with that, the follow-up is, we paid for that out of 31AA last year, and 31AA doesn't exist in either, it's been a while since it was a health, it's significantly smaller. I don't think it exists in one, but it is a health, they rolled everything up into just the unprobable. So, right now, we don't have an idea where we're gonna pay for it, I mean, they don't know what, if it's gonna be paid out of grants, and they reduce that grant, we don't have the carryover we used to have on grants to sustain. Now, given what Tammy showed you, that expense lineup, if we keep running the expenses like it is, regardless of where it's being paid for, we're gonna have that expense. So that's the conversation that I'm trying to coordinate, the date with John Moore, the chief, to schedule, okay, if we wanted him X number of days, then our expectation is, he's gonna be here those days, because that's what, basically, what I stood up here and told the community is, he's gonna be here, we don't have him every day, we don't have him five days, but we have a schedule that you kind of couldn't, there's a random schedule so that it's, you kind of didn't know when to expect them, so if something bad was gonna happen, they didn't know when he was gonna be here, but they always knew he was gonna be here. We're expecting that, if we're gonna say he's gonna be here on this Monday, he's here on this Monday, other than, it'd be sick. That's where we're at. So, right now, we don't have really, based on, like, physically in our building for week one of school, we're starting, we've gotta figure out what that schedule looks like. That's where we're at. But funding-wise, I, I'm gonna say, I don't know where it's gonna come from, because if either one of the budgets approve, then we're gonna have to figure out, we don't have enough money in 31AA, because it was reduced, remember, we got the building monitors that are part of that cost. And the carryover, we have one more year of what current programs we have in 31A, which is not the resource officer. So if we're gonna put the resource officer in 31A, which is the at-risk, then we're gonna have to look at programs for next year, because we don't have, I'm saying this right, we don't have enough in the carryover to sustain next year's program, regardless of what the state does. That is a long answer to a, but that's the complicatedness.
Well, that's, that sounds confusing.
My biggest thing is, our, our bill is expected the resource officer to be here, X number of days. Last year, he was not, for a variety of reasons. And from a grant perspective, we can only pay for what we have documented for, so we paid what the sign sheet was for the, or the resource officer, which was a lot less than what we were, but last year.
So when was the last time we didn't have a resource officer?
I don't think, I don't think, since I've been here, we've not had one, we've had one, we used to, when I started here, the budget was about $10,000. Now the budget's nearing 20, 25, because they changed the way, maybe in the city, how they charge us for the resource. We used to be charged as whoever they backfilled the resource, which was usually a reserve officer or someone, we got that rate, because, kind of like a sub-rate, if you will, we paid the sub-rate. Now we actually pay the rate of the resource officer, which is a lot more, so it, it budgeted well over $20,000. I don't remember what the final bill for last year was.
I don't remember.
Off the top of my head, but it was less than that amount we budgeted, and that was based on X number of days throughout the year, which, look at all the sign sheets, we didn't have those days, they weren't. And I'm not talking the days where, I'm sick, I can't come in, so, yeah, that happens, all, I'm talking, we scheduled them for the seven hours, and we had a half hour there, or we had three half-hours, because there was a visiting school, that's what I'm talking about.
And the responsibility, the tasks of what they do for us, are they controlled, or...
We sat down at the beginning of last year with everybody at the table, and I say everybody, I talked to the chief, the liaison officer, the principal, women, the deans, at that meeting, and we talked about, when you go to the high school, these are the things that we're looking for you to do, when you're at the elementary school, and they were different at the different buildings, obviously, just the age of the kid, and then we had the schedules rotated, so if you had the morning at the high school, you were at the afternoon, or the evening, or afternoon, or midday, on a different day, so it was kind of a rotation schedule. Elementary, presence out in the parking lot, for those parents that struggle following the pattern, that's important in the morning. And at the high school, presence in the afternoon is important, you know, getting kids out of here safely, so they're not peeling out of here. During the day, it's building relations with kids, doing some conversation, you might have seen some things on social media, like donuts with Officer McCoy, which we did, and during positive, building that relationship, but at various levels, or working with a group of kids that are making some poor choices, if you will, to help them turn that around.
I guess I would, I would really like to see us try to find a fun somewhere, or that.
Right, our plan is, our plan is not to eliminate it, but it's to figure out a schedule that we can, when we're expecting that he's here, barring...
That we're getting what actually, yeah.
And again, I, I understand, police emergencies happen, and everybody's being, we all get that piece of it, but there's more of the non-schedules than not working the schedule, than working the schedule that we experienced.
When's your next meeting?
When's their next meeting? I'm trying to coordinate times with John Moore and, and meeting dates, and that's the challenge.
So until then, we just won't have one?
They're, they're on call, there's an emergency, they're on call. We still have, the security monitors are doing the security checks throughout the buildings, your doors are closed, and, and the building, they could be in the hallway during passing time, they could be checking to make sure all the doors, etc., are closed, those security features are, that still exists.
Okay, Laura, is there anyone else that you, are you all set?
Yeah, I just hit those two, thank you.
Um, Barbara?
All I have is, the girls have shirts on tonight that they put together, one of you stand up, so that the board sees what the back says. They wanted something that they could wear to board meetings, so they got their names, so they had, so that's their uniform, I guess, if you will, that they wanted something that they could have, they could wear to board meetings, so that's what they have tonight. And, so, in their conversation with me, they, if, if members of the board were interested in, you know, a shirt like that, that said board, or something on it, you know, we could, we know that Mr. Wonsley's not a t-shirt person, so we, so we looked into, you know, polo for him, but, because we were talking about what everybody wears, you know, what's the appropriate thing to wear to board meetings, you know, that kind of stuff, so...
Or even at events or something, I always try to wear something.
Yeah, so they, they just came up with this idea, so if, if anyone else is interested, just shoot me an email or something, and they'll try to come up with something for us, if we're interested in doing it, but I think they look really good.
I like the color.
Yeah.
Would it come in a sweatshirt for like us cold people? I feel like I always have my jacket on, usually, I get cold, just looking at it.
I think we could have a day new, so, yeah.
She doesn't have her covered up tonight, so.
I, I've been close.
Oh, very close.
It's chilly, my hand is cold. That's all I got to add.
Okay, thank you, and I didn't have anything to add to that. Next item on our agenda is our public comments, since the last board meeting, the board has not received any emails, there were no public comments from the last board meeting, we need to address at this time. Any member of the public may address the board, please sign in and state your name and address, I guess, you'll have three minutes to address the board.
I have to do my address?
No, just give us your name.
So I would need to say it, I've got this.
Okay, so, just give us your name, if you put it on the sheet there.
I'll do that.
Okay, thank you.
And start, and then I'll sign the sheet, so you can get them faster. So my question was, I have looked it up to when C U F polls comes up, it's always the fourth Wednesday of September, so it's September 24th, and I was just wondering if the time and place has been chosen, and if not, it could be chosen, and then, I would really like to forward this to the local churches, to put in their bulletins, and try to get a little more, last year was me and five kids, so I'd like to get a little more, I think there's more people that would come with me.
Okay, so, do you want Mr. Wonsley to get back with?
Yep, I'll get back to you.
Okay, that'd be great. Okay, cool, thank you very much. Any other public comments? Okay, next item on our agenda is our board action, Mr. Wonsley has requested to speak before we actually have the motion.
So last year, and I don't remember the timing, the state passed a law that said we have to put water filtration systems on drinking fountains, basically, it's kind of a very simplistic form. So we submitted our application based on how many drinking fountains we have and so forth, and we rewarded a grant, remember Tammy, I'll stop you, I have a grant?
$113,900.
$113,900, and that's what the state, ran out of money, or estimated what we could do the job for. So, we had to put it out to bid, and so we got the bids back, there were two companies, one of which rescinded their bid and helped me put it up.
One came to the pre-bid meeting that decided not to bid, and another company that was meant to walk through the pre-bid meeting did. So we had one that was involved, one that came with this in, one that didn't count, that did.
So when you look at these bids, this is a lot more money than what the state gave us. So Tammy and Preston sat down and kind of narrowed the scope down of which ones, I guess, give us the biggest bang for our buck, or the drinking fountains.
Which ones weren't required by decree, which ones were our actions that required?
So like, for instance, a classroom drinking fountain, other than early childhood, preschool, is not require a filtration system, because it's not a common drinking source for the building, and anybody who's in the building, that's basically a nutshell, but a drinking fountain in the hallway is a common source of needing a filtration system there. And we did put some in the middle school, when we did the renovations, the bottle fillers. So here before you tonight, is a word of caution. So here before you tonight is a word of contract to put drinking fountains in, in the areas that we need to put them in, because if we don't put them in, then we have to put a sign that says, if you do that, I'm right. And I think that's good PR for the district, you walking around with, here's a water fountain, but don't drink it, because the assumption is not safe. We have in our, we check the water, we have samples taken, and we flush the water fountains out, and everything like we're supposed to, between, before kids come back, and staff come back from breaks, so that if anything sits in the pipe, you're going to get stuck in your water, with all flushed, as part of the custodial duties that we do. So that's what's here before you. This is grant dollars. However, there's going to be some that, you roll over the grant, and you've got to get the drinking fountain fixed. Did I capture everything, Tammy? Did I miss anything?
We are still, for those classroom drinking fountains, we are still, they'll turn down, because we want kids to be able to recover them. However, we did change it from, at the elementary school, is where most of those drinking fountains are, from having the company install filters to having our staff. We've talked to the bidders, and they both assured us that, yes, this is something your staff can handle, it's not. You can change, you know, do some plumbing on your state, installing your own plumbing on the state, you can do that. So we're confident we can do that. That saved us a ton of money. We also had some optional fountains elsewhere that we were converting, we didn't have to convert them, so we're not doing that. But all the places that require we'll have, you know, the filtered water. And we have to do it in the kitchens, because that water can be used for cooking. So those are also in this bid. But the things that, when we narrowed down the scope, we just took out things that weren't required, and that we know we don't have to.
Did we have to change some that we already did? To update them, to be improved?
If they're not filtered, we have to get them filtered. And a number of them are not filtered. I don't know if all of them are not filtered, but there's a specific filter and system that, that meets the state guidelines that we have to use. There are some, I think, that were installed, but the good news is, the electrical should be already attached to them, because you need, if they're water filtration, they have to have the electrical. So we think that's there for most of those that were recently installed. We'll know more once we get the contractor on site. So we have recommended to put in the cost for electrical, just in case, but it's totally good, there's anything to hurt. We're just making an assumption, we don't want the just-in-conception.
And you also see in the accent, there's that, that 5% runoff, it's like, if once we start pulling the drinking fountain off the wall, we don't know what, hopefully, it's a good thing, it's a one-to-one, but there could be some other things we got to deal with, like electrical. So I just wanted to give you the context of this, that we're doing everything we can so that we don't have any drinking fountains with the label, don't drink this water, and that they have a certain label's got to say, but that's an estimate.
Any questions? Are we out there?
It's, so, for the cost for this, that's the initial replacement and everything that's going to be replaced, with the exception of the fountains that are in the basements, individual basements. What is the additional residual cost? Like, how often do the filters need to be changed? Is there, like, they're good for a month? And, or how long is, are the filters good for? What's the cost associated with replacement?
Those costs are going to come out of our operations budget, as they are during right now with the middle school filter water.
The filling station.
The filling station, thank you. But we don't know what that, we don't have a definitive cost, we have, we start ballparking what we're going to do with that decline item for, for that account, because, and I don't remember off the top of my head, so I can get to this if you want, how often those filters have to be changed. For some reason, I'm thinking it's six months, because they do it usually during Christmas break, and then again, I know they do it during summer break. That's why I'm thinking it's a six-month, again, in June, and then they come back in December to change them. So mainly twice a year, we're going to have a filter cost, like we do with our, our event right now, we have, we change those twice a year.
And is there any, any way, because you know, this is a state mandated requirement, and we got the initial $113,009, is there any supplemental that we can apply for?
I, I contacted the state and asked them if it was possible to increase the grant that we received, just to say, okay, no, this is what you gave us, but this is what our cost, I mean, we amend the grant to get a larger grant to cover the cost, and they said no. They also sent out, they are doing a round two for these grants, however, if you got the first grant, which we did, you're not eligible to participate, participating in the round two, so.
So, yeah, it's just another case of the state telling us that we have to do this and spend money, but.
Not a cost-demanding.
Right.
Yeah, right.
It's very common.
Okay.
And I will tell you, our custodians, Len primarily is the one that's changing the filters, and our water filters that we have, and also we've trained, so we start changing our air filters to bring that cost down from a third-party unit, just to replace the filter cost for those events.
And for the filters that the staff can just replace themselves, that's just, is that coming out of our general fund?
That would come out of the operations, the general fund.
Okay. And then on the, the one page here, the cooling and heating, let's see, the third paragraph, it refers to the cost of price by bid for 8400, whether or not we use brass bubblers. Okay, not a brass bubblers guy. What are the pros and cons of that?
My understanding is they're tamper-proof, and so it's whether or not you want to upgrade the cost for those bubblers that are tamper-proof and they're made for it. But Preston and the bidders are hot, and they don't feel we need that, so that cost would be a state-made reduction to where, and that would match the other companies.
Okay. Yep, so, so again, thank you.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion for the approval to award a contract for Filter First Healthy Hydration Project.
I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award the contract for the Filter First/Healthy Hydration Project to contrast mechanical heat for a total not to exceed $124,650 plus $12,000 for electrical work, or $136,650 plus 5% for unknown site conditions, as outlined in the attached documentation, for which funding from the Filter First/Healthy Hydration Grant and the 2025-2026 General Fund is authorized.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, this is a roll call vote. Margaret?
Aye.
Raymond?
Aye.
Candace?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carries. If they know further business, the board will adjourn at 9:38. Thank you everyone.